Oh, you know why the mayor has a doctorate in electrical engineering. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being very patiently seated. I will convene the regular West Windsor Township Planning Board meeting at 7:01 PM on May 11th. This is to advise that notice of the time, date, location, and the extent known the agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in a public place reserved for such or similar announcements, transmitted to the Times of Trenton, the Princeton Packet, and West Windsor and Plainsboro News, and filed with township clerk all on May 5. Tonight, we embark on a rather significant application for the township of West Windsor. We expect that this application will go for many meetings. Some of you in the audience may be attending your first planning board meeting, so let me just explain what our typical procedures are which we will be following for this hearing. We will begin with the applicant presenting their material. They will be sworn and give testimony. It is probably unlikely that we will finish all of the applicant's testimony even tonight. After the applicant completes his testimony, then our professional staff presents their reports to the board. And after that is completed, at some point, we then open the hearing to the public. So, members of the audience do not get an opportunity to speak or comment until we get to the public hearing portion. We hope that you will understand this procedure and accept it for what it is. Another logistical factor is that this room is doing multiple uses. And because of an early morning commitment for people involved with the senior center, we must adjourn at our normal target time of 10:00 PM. So, just so you're aware of that. I understand that the applicant has provided to our staff all of the drawings and displays, and they either are now or shortly will be posted on the website. So, but before we begin our main order of business tonight, we do give the public a chance to comment on any item that is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak on something not pertaining to the application tonight, please come to the microphone in the front of the room, give your name and address, and make your comment. Sorry? Oh, yes. All right. Cindy, I'm sorry I missed you. Will you do please call the roll?
Mr. Lovero? Ms. Bowery?
Yes.
Mr. Schittow?
Yes.
Mr. Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Here.
Mr. Bag?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Here.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Karp?
Here.
Chairman O'Brien?
Hello. One more time, anybody want to speak on anything that's not on the agenda for tonight? Okay. So, it would be our preference that any of the representatives of the applicant who expect to provide testimony would all be sworn together and will capture their names and go from there. So, I will turn it over to the attorney for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
First, Mr. Chair, a proof of publication service or in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you, Jerry.
I was told I need to get closer to the mic, or the mic needs to come closer to me. So, Jerry, would you like us to go through our list of consultants this evening?
If you could do that, and then why don't you just enumerate them, then we'll, I'll swear them all in at once.
John Porzek?
Would you all stand, please, and be sworn simultaneously, and then we'll get your names?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So sworn or affirmed, if you could each state your full name and spell your last, starting with Carl.
My name is Carl with a K, Henke, P is in Peter, E H N K E with Langen Engineering.
My name is Sean McDonough, I'm the project planner, it's spelled M C, capital B O N O G H.
My name is Brian Waisner, W A I S N O R, I'm a civil engineer with Langen Engineering.
Is that B R I or B R Y?
B R Y.
Thank you.
My name is John Porzek, P O R C E K, and I have the applicant Bridge and Rush.
My name is Benjamin Muller, M U E L L E R, and I'm with Oscar Russel Associates, and we have a topic of notes.
I'm sorry, the what?
No, it's.
And the Muller, had he, and he did? Emmy, okay.
And the first name?
Benjamin.
Daniel? Did you say Daniel?
Benjamin.
Daniel.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Bobstar, B A U N S T A R A, D R.
Would you do that spelling one more time, please? Thank you. And the first name? Okay. Be comfortable. Thank you.
May I get started? Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mayor, members of the planning board. My name is Christopher Degresia from the law firm of Fegory, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath here on behalf of the applicant, Bridgepoint West Windsor LLC. The application before you this evening is for site plan and subdivision approval related to a warehouse distribution project. I'm sure you're all familiar with the property, which was the former American Cyanide Site. It had, I'm sorry, it was, I said, I know, my fault, cyanamide.
Glad you clarified that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I heard the whispering, and I'm like, oh, I misspoke. Sorry about that. In that, it was an industrial agricultural resource facility, and it had a different mix of uses from office laboratory space, some greenhouse space. It is located, the property is located at the corner of Route 1 and Quaker Bridge Road, and it's bifurcated by Clarksville Road. It's made up of a number of different lots, approximately 20, and put all together, the entire, entire site or tract makes up 645 acres. The warehouse distribution project, which we're going to talk about this evening, will be developed on 539 of those acres. The site has a long history, and I don't want to get into a lot of detail, but there's a little bit of background I think I should share with the board. At least the recent history, in 2010, the site was acquired by Howard Hughes Corporation. Howard Hughes wanted to develop the property into a mixed use, which was predominantly residential, so they had a concept with about 2,000 residential units on it. West Windsor Township was concerned with the project and, and the strain it could have on municipal services and schools. The end result was, this ended up in litigation in, in 2018. Sometime after that, in October of 2019, Atlantic Realty Development Corporation acquired the title and development rights to the property. They sat down with the township, took a look at the property, and put together a plan and a settlement. So, the, the litigation was settled through with Atlantic Realty and the township. The terms were, yeah, I guess I'll just focus on a couple of key terms. One was to rezone the property to permit at least a minimum of 5.5 million square feet of modern warehouse use, up to 150,000 square feet of retail. As part of it, Atlantic gave up its right, or the owner of the property gave up its right to have residential development and to challenge what was being proposed as the affordable housing plan. In fact, we, we only get to, so no residential development could be proposed on this property unless, per the settlement agreement, certain things occur. For example, if there's a denial of a fully conforming warehouse application, that would open the door to litigation and the potential for residential. But barring that, it was agreed that there would be no residential development on this property. As a result of the stipulation and settlement and consent order that was entered into, the property was in fact rezoned. And this application that you're about to hear this evening is, has been designed to comply with the terms of the settlement agreement. It also has been designed to be consistent with the purposes of the master plan and with the zoning ordinance. So, you are going to see an application with a permitted use, which is a warehousing and distribution use. It is going to meet all of the bulk requirements and zoning requirements under the zone, which is the planned commercial district. It will, and, and that goes from area frontage with setback heights and all of the bulk requirements. As I mentioned, this is going to be a discussion of not only a permitted use, but this use was a favored use at its location because of the low intensity and minimal impact. When you compare it to other uses that are permitted under the zoning code. In addition to the use itself having these characteristics, you'll see that the design itself has been well thought out to minimize impacts. You'll see enhanced buffering, lots of.
Excuse me, would the silence prevail for the audience, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It has a lot of enhanced buffering, plantings, the, the loading docks are well screened. So, you'll see also that when you look at the standards, this isn't an overdevelopment. For example, using an example here, the impervious coverage requirement for this particular property is 70%. Applicant's warehouse development proposal is at 44%, so nowhere's near the maximum amount. As I said, you'll see a plan that's in full compliance, but it does have a lot of nice little extras, and we'll talk about those from porous pavement, which is not particularly required, from little things like bike parking to sustainability measures. The, the application itself has a couple of components, and I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes so that the board, as well as the community, understands. The, the first component of the application is a subdivision. So, we're consolidating the 20 or so lots and subdividing it into lots to effectuate the purpose of the master plan and the zoning ordinance. And what this does is allows us to create five resid, five, I'm sorry, not residential, five lots along the frontage of Route 1 and Quaker Bridge Road that will be designated for future development of a retail nature. And both the master plan and the zoning ordinance outlines those principles and goals. So, the subdivision aspect is essentially setting the stage for orderly development. This is a very large parcel. We're coming in with the first stage, which is to subdivide, create the retail, five retail lots. And then behind that will be six lots that will be associated with the, the warehouse development in the master plan road that will be built. The second aspect, excuse me, or component, is site plan review. We are proposing the site plan for the warehouse development in two phases. The first phase, we're asking for both preliminary approval and final approval as part of this application. In the second phase, we're looking for only preliminary approval. The first phase involves the warehouses, and I should say three warehouses, that will be right behind the lots that are designated for retail and commercial development. Those three warehouses in round numbers will be approximately 3 million square feet. The second phase will have four additional warehouses behind that, so moving away from Quaker Bridge Road. They will be in the rough numbers of 2.5 million, a little bit over that, but just in round numbers, 2.5 million square feet. Why I wanted to point out that the second phase is for preliminary only. Those four buildings cannot be constructed yet until we come back before this board for final approval. So, our application for the first phase is for preliminary and final three buildings. If approved, we can go in and get building permits. With regard to that second phase, we have to come back, file another application. Of course, we have, we will have rights, vested rights within that plan, which is an orderly development of the property, but we can't yet go in and actually construct that until we come before this board again. The last component I wanted to mention is that as part of this application, we're here to request extended vesting. We're requesting extended vesting for 10 years. The municipal land use law specifically allows applicants to request extended vesting on planned developments and large applications. So, if you look at the municipal land use law, the thresholds are projects that are 150 acres or for preliminary. It has slightly different standards, but different, definitely for preliminary, 150 acres or 200,000 square feet of non-residential development. And here, the numbers, as you know, like we just talked about, are multiples of the threshold. So, this is a really appropriate application for extended vesting because it's a very comprehensive design. It's a planned, planned development, and it is going to be set out in stages. I think we went through our list of consultants this evening. As you know, we'll, we'll, we'll go through with representative of the, the applicant, will then go into our project, hear from our project engineer, our, our noise consultant, our acoustical expert, our traffic engineer, our architect, and then our planner. And Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if you don't have any questions, I'd like to pull up our first witness, which is a representative of the applicant.
Please proceed.
Okay. John? I think I'm going to turn this towards you. Don't have to, I got a mic, but. John, correct and sworn in. Sat, and then we'll, we'll. Thank you. So, this is John.
This is where they're going to be, ma'am. Sorry.
John, your title is Vice President of Development?
That is correct. I'm Executive Vice President of Bridge Industrial, the New Jersey office.
And you've already been sworn in. Can you tell us a little bit about your experience, your position, and this project?
Sure. So, first off, I have been in the construction development business for over 35 years, and 25 years of that has been in the industrial space. A bit of information about Bridge. Bridge was founded in 2000 in Chicago. It then opened up offices in Miami, then New Jersey, Los Angeles, Seattle, and most recently in the UK. Since its inception, Bridge has developed over 67 million square feet of industrial space throughout the country. And Bridge, New Jersey, has been in existence since 2014. I am one of the principals there, and I was there at the inception. And we have either built and or have under development over 18 million speed, feet of industrial space. And I don't say those numbers to impress anybody, but I say those numbers to impress upon everybody that this is what we do. This is our expertise. We do not build other asset classes. We strictly focus in on industrial. We feel that we're students of our work, and when we approach these projects, we do them because we have the experience in the industry. We both find the land, we develop the properties, we lease out the properties, and we manage the properties. And the other important point to mention is we also have an in-house property management division. We feel it is very important to maintain our facilities in the highest degree of cleanliness and keeping the maintenance and everything just right. And therefore, we do have our own property management division in-house. So, then the question is, why West Windsor? West Windsor, we feel, we feel is an extremely great location for, for industrial. We feel that this is, that there's a very robust roadway network around the area. We also feel that there is a very good degree of interconnectivity with the, both the interstate and the interstate roadway network. On this particular project, we actually are collaborating with Atlantic Realty. They have, have a longstanding relationship within the municipality. And in this particular case, we are going to be leasing the property from Atlantic Realty. But we will be fully developing the property and overseeing the asset, managing it for the long term. The other point I wanted to mention was that we also approach these projects from a partnership, from a public and a private collaborative partnership. And while we're here this evening, we have been working with the municipality for the past nine months for a series of TRC meetings with the professionals and collaborating and listening to comments and understanding what the concerns are.
John, excuse me.
Yes.
TRC stands for Technical Review Committee. It's our staff dealing with the applicant.
Yeah, that, that is correct, and that is the process where our engineers speak to the municipal engineers. We get the feedback, we implement those comments into our plans. And we were very, you know, we wanted to be very mindful and very thoughtful of how the development is going to work into the natural environment. And while Chris has mentioned a couple of the parameters, I think it's key to mention that, as Kristen mentioned, there's an allowable impervious coverage of 70%. We're 44%. That's probably 37, 38% less than what's allowable. There's probably north of 170 acres that we're not going to disturb in the way of wetlands, greenery, things of that nature. There's a series of berms and trees. We're going to be planting over 20,000 trees, new trees in this development. We're going to be keeping a number of the trees as well, and there's over 24,000 shrubs that are going to be planted as well. And this is all collaboration, going back and forth with the municipality, the landscape professionals, creating berming, creating the greenery that's important to us and both the municipality. The other thing is our buildings will be LEED certified. You know, we feel it's very important, things, and the architect will be further discussing those types of assets of how our buildings are put together, the green components of those buildings. Again, we feel that that's very important. Chris had mentioned that there are also aspects of the stormwater. He mentioned porous pavement, but there's probably 70 different basins on the property in the way of bio-basins, infiltration basins. There was the low-impact methods of having, you know, the water run through greenery infiltrate into the ground. Those are all important things that we're taking into account with the, in the plan that you see in front of you this evening.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about how the building is being developed on spec?
I sure, I certainly can. So, the first thing, and I know sometimes people hear spec and they get concerned. You know, we've been doing this for, for a long period of time, and we build our buildings on spec because many times tenants cannot picture what the buildings are going to look like. They physically can't see them, they can't put a timeframe to it. They, they are unclear on, I'm looking at a plan and trying to understand how the buildings can operate. We felt that it's very effective to move forward, build the buildings, and then we can walk the tenants through, show them things as they're into construction, so we can actually show them how the facility, facility will run, how it'll operate, how it'll look. And, you know, we've been doing this for a number of years, and we know how to design the facility so they, they have sufficient loading docks, sufficient spaces that the trailers can put their empties while they're loading and unloading. You know, auto parking, where the, where the truck docks are, the configurations of the buildings, those are all things that we take into account in the design. And it's been a very effective approach. And while we can't say who the specific tenants will be, what I can do is offer some examples of the type of tenants that we attract to our buildings. And I'll just mention a few of them. One, there's a company called Boxed, B O X E D. I don't know if people drive along Route 78 by the Parkway. Essentially, they, they store and distribute household-type goods similar to what a Costco would. That's an example of one of the tenants. We have another tenant that we put into one of our buildings by the name of Uniqlo. They happen to be apparel, storage, and distributors. We have another company called Mark Anthony Brands. They happen to distribute different type beverages. Another company, by the way, Metropolitan Warehousing, they happen to take your furniture. Scotts, have you heard of Scotts Lawn and Garden Products? That's another one of tenants. So, these are the types of tenants that you would see in these types of buildings. We typically will try and find somebody that is very financially stable, can be an asset to the municipality. It's very important for us to get, you know, tenants that are long-term, quality tenants that are benefit to both us and to the municipality.
John, you will lease these buildings to the tenants, right?
That is correct. Yeah, that, that is correct. We would own, we own the buildings, we would then lease them to the tenants. And our capital partners are big on long-term holds. So, it's very important for us to, whatever we do, we look for the long term. We don't look for the short term. That's, that's our mantra. Yes, yes. Yeah, we would start, you know, again, Kristen mentioned our phase one there. We would, you know, start the building, we would continue in construction, and then we would then be marketing the building and leasing, and the leasing just follows the construction. It's been a very successful approach for us.
You are leasing this from Atlantic Realty, this common lease, long-term lease you have from them?
Oh, excuse me, I had a hard time hearing the question.
You are leasing this property from Atlantic Realty?
We, we are leasing it from Atlantic Realty. They're.
Any, any, is it a long-term lease?
Oh, yes, it is. Yes, it, it, yes, it's, it's a very long-term lease.
It's called a long-term ground lease.
Yes, it's, it is, it is fairly typical in, in the industry, but yes.
So, you're leasing it from Atlantic, and then you lease it on to the?
To tenants, that's correct, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, again, it's a very, it's a very typical way of doing things. It's, it's, you know, more, Atlantic has a certain way that they like to look at things, they're long-term holders as well, so it's a very aligned approach. Yes, yes. We, we own the building on property that we're leasing from Atlantic. That is correct. That, that is correct, yes.
It's, it's not an unusual arrangement. Just up Route 1 in Plainsboro, the Forestal Center there is set up the same way where it's a long-term lease. That's where the Weston Hotel is. And it's, it's pretty much like that. is. And it's, it's pretty much like that. It functions that same way.
Yes, exactly.
How far along the construction process do you know who is going to lease it? I'm sure you don't wait till the last nail is hit in the wall.
Oh, for when we start leasing the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll typically start leasing a building, like, soon as we start doing some significant earthwork and we start construction, we'll then start to prepare a leasing package and start to actively lease it. So while we're constructing it, we start leasing it right at the beginning.
And do you expect single tenant in all these three buildings you are going to build?
I think it would vary. I mean, the way we construct our buildings, it could either be a single tenant. We can easily demise the buildings. So that would be really dependent on who the tenant is. And, you know, again, any of these buildings can be either one tenant or they can be demised to be multi-tenant.
So what's the minimum amount you will subdivide?
Yeah, I don't know. You know, we'd probably look at somewhere around 200,000 square feet, probably somewhere around that neighborhood, you know, for, for demising a space.
Will any of these buildings be refrigerated or refrigeration?
Yeah, they are all currently contemplated as dry storage.
Okay, no refrigeration.
Excuse me?
No refrigeration?
We don't have it currently contemplated that way. I mean, it's, you know, we could look at a specific example, but typically, our buildings right now, if we look through our portfolio, they are all dry storage.
Are there any other questions from board members to this witness? John, I have one.
Okay.
At this point, what is your outlook for completion of the application before the board tonight?
Are you asking me how many meetings I think it's going to take?
No, no. When will, when will you be ready to get a, all the permits needed to occupy the buildings? When will this project finish?
To occupy, or it's meaning to construct everything and to occupy it? Is that the question, or when to start?
If approved, you're going to start construction.
That is correct immediately.
And what is your outlook as to when this application will be completed in terms of construction?
I would say probably two years.
How many?
Two years. For the, well, two years for phase one, and then the second phase would probably be another two years.
The second phase is going to start after first phase right away?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, we would go...
Well, they have to come back to the board, Alice.
Yeah, well, yeah, correct. So our intent would be, is, I mean, we're here, obviously, for preliminary final for the first phase, preliminary for the second. We'd get through that. We would start to engage in construction. Then we would come right back for the final for the second phase. But the intent is to clearly continue throughout the whole project. They would, they would follow because, you know, you're still going to have your, you know, whatever you call your foundation crews, et cetera, that would kind of run from building to building. So I'd say fairly sequentially, yes. They would be, they would be... Yeah, no, we're not, that, no, we would not wait. We would just continue right through, and the intent is just to continue. So there, you know, there could be a time where there's, you know, construction happening on, you know, a couple of buildings at the same time. But yes, the intent is sequentially to work them through.
Just one question.
Yes.
You said you have an internal management operation.
Yes.
What will it do?
What, excuse me?
What will the internal management operation do?
Property management.
Okay, would that include, what, landscaping?
Yes, yes.
Trash removal?
That is, yes, that, yes. So it would include any type of landscape. Well, the trash removal would typically be via the tenant.
Okay.
But like snow plowing, landscaping maintenance, all of those things, you know, maintaining the buildings, all that goes to our property management division.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Once you build the, once you build the warehouse, can they be repurposed for anything other than just storage and distribution?
That's strictly storage and distribution.
There, I think that would be, the answer is based upon our definitions and our zoning ordinance. John, I think we've exhausted our questions for now. For you, thank you. We may need to talk to you some more.
If there's any other questions, I'm here all night.
No. As I've said earlier, the public does not participate until we get to the public hearing. I'm sorry, but that's our procedure. Thank you for understanding.
All right, thank you very much.
Let me just suggest, for those of you who have a question for any particular witness, if you have a piece of paper and something to write with, make a note of it so that when we get to the public hearing, you'll easily be able to raise your points. All questions are fair. It's just a matter of following the procedure of when they can be asked. Thank you. No. You may have come in after I made the announcement, but I would anticipate that the public will be heard at the end of the second meeting, or more likely, the third meeting. We have a lot of witnesses to go through.
I'm Gene, one second. So we are videotaping the meeting, and usually it takes about two days to load it up. So it will be available on the township website, probably by end of this week or early next week. And we will make every effort to videotape every meeting, barring some technical problem, and they will all be available on the township website.
And if I could jump in for a moment and just follow up on what the chair was saying. The process that he laid out is a typical process that we always follow, and that virtually all planning boards follow. And the reason for that is, in part, things would go much more smoothly if you had the presentation by the applicant and then our professionals, and then the public, they can make comments and ask questions of any of the professionals by both the municipal professionals and the applicant's professionals at that point in time. And there's a practical reason for that process as well. Frequently, questions that are asked early on are ones that will be answered actually by a subsequent witness. So you might find that something that you want to ask about will actually be answered before you have an opportunity to ask the question. I just wanted to explain that.
The gentleman who just spoke is our attorney, Mr. Muller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to bring up our second witness, which is the project engineer, Brian. I think you were sworn in, but we didn't have you qualified, so.
Sure.
It's Brian Weisner from Langin. Can you tell us a little bit about your licensing and experience?
Sure. So I'm a civil engineer. I have a bachelor's of science from civil engineering at Lehigh University, a master's of science in civil engineering from Virginia Tech. I've been with Langin for over 25 years, practicing civil engineering on similar kinds of land development projects. I've presented to planning boards such as yours in multiple towns, most recently in, or nearby in Hamilton, Piscataway, Elizabeth, and other places. And I'm the principal engineer in charge of this project. That's my qualifications.
Brian, what are your professional credentials?
I guess I should say I'm a certif, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and my license is current.
Thank you.
We'd like to offer him as an expert witness.
Does anybody on the board object to this, being an expert witness? So be it.
Thank you.
I need to find a good spot to set up here, so use these boards. I'm going to shift around, if I can. Am I going to block your view too much? So I'll...
Before we get started, I think you're first going to cite to this exhibit here.
That, that's correct.
So we could mark that as Exhibit A1.
A1, correct.
And it's described as a vicinity map. In this way, you can go right into describing the existing property and the current conditions.
And Mr. Muller, if you could mark that, that as, or Christopher as A1. Thank you.
Thank you. Pointer, I got you. No, no, I have a point. I'm just trying to double hand. So this map is titled Vicinity Map. It's an aerial photograph of the site. I think most people know where the site is, but to orient you, on the left side of the plan is Route 1. On the bottom of the plan is Quaker Bridge Road, which is a county road. Through the middle of the site is Clarksville Road, also a county road. To the south is the Amtrak rail lines. North is to the left on this plan, so we'll call Route 1 north and the Amtrak line south, as I continue to talk about these things. And as was previously mentioned, this is the former American Cyanamid facility. It was predominantly an RND facility that had scattered buildings throughout, as shown on this aerial photograph. This photograph was taken around June of 2021, while the buildings were still standing. These buildings have all been knocked down now, or in the process of being demolished. And on the north side of Clarksville Road, it's approximately 330 acres. There's actually 15 different tax lots. I won't read each and every one to you, but there are 15 tax lots totaling 333 acres north of Clarksville. And on the south side of Clarksville, there's approximately 312 acres spread across five different tax lots. So that totals up to 645 acres in total. When American Cyanamid was running, once upon a time, and their, and their predecessors, they had a water supply system. They had wells on site, and they also had their own treatment plant. Those have been decommissioned and removed from service. The other thing I'll note about this plan is you can see there's some roads indicated on the aerial, these brownish areas running through the site, both northwest, sorry, north, south, and east-west. The predominant driveway and location for this facility was off of Quaker Bridge Road. There are also side entrances off of Clarksville Road, and many of the smaller lots had their own driveways as well. So this site is now in the PCD zone, the Planned Commercial Development District. And just to read you a small quote from the regulations, it says, "Retail, service, commercial, entertainment, and hospitality uses are to be located along Quaker Bridge Road and Route 1 in order to maintain the commercial character of these corridors. Warehouse and distribution uses are encouraged within the remainder of the district." And that really leads us to my second exhibit, which is a subdivision.
Actually, Brian, I'd like to ask an existing conditions question.
Sure.
And the exhibit I need to have present is the United States Geological Survey Site Location Map. It's in the Environmental Impact Report. Do you have access to it? Because it'll, it'll help you to understand my question.
Let me see if I have a copy here.
It's in a table, it's Table Figure 1 in the tables.
Which report was that?
The Environmental Impact Report, Environmental Impact Statement.
Thank you.
The Tables tab, and it's the USGS Site Location Map. Are you there?
I am. I, I do not have a copy of that figure.
Okay, well, um, so, Brian, for those present, can you highlight the green thicket on the south, on the east side, on the east side of Clarksville Road, the green thicket that's in the middle of where Building C will be? The green, the big green thicket that's surrounded by brown, to the, to the right of Clarksville Road, down, 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 go down, keep going down, stop, that green thicket right there. Yeah, okay, you're there. Thank you. So on the United States Geological Site Location Map, it has the designation airway beacon. And yet, when I did a drive-by, I couldn't see anything like an airway beacon there. Yet this is on the USGS map, topo map dated 2019. Can you elucidate and expand on that, please?
I can only theorize. I've visited the site. I'm not aware of a beacon being located there either. We've performed surveys of the site. I'm not aware of a beacon being there. I can theorize that once upon a time, there was a beacon there, and that's just been carried forth on the geological survey, which is predominantly looking at topographic data rather than the background data. So I, I can tell you that there's no beacon there currently.
Thank you. So not crazy.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll call this Exhibit A2.
Yes.
It's a subdivision exhibit prepared by Langin, my office. And what it shows on the top half of the figure is the existing lot configuration, all those lots I mentioned on the north side and the south side, in all their existing conditions. On the bottom half of the page, we're showing the proposed subdivision. And what it shows in the reddish or purplish color are there's five lots along Quaker Bridge Road and Route 1 that are being subdivided and preserved for future commercial development. Other than the subdivision, that part of the property is not part of our application. The four dark blue, or, yeah, I guess we'll call it dark blue lots, are the lots that are the subject of the warehouse application. Those four lots totaled five, approximately 539 acres. And the red lots in total add up to about 85 acres. There are two other lots proposed, and they're shown what looked like right-of-way for a road, and that's because it is the right-of-way for a road. It's the road that lines up with the master plan road. The master plan of the town's report called for a road to come through this area from Route 1, looping all the way down through Clarksville and down to Quaker Bridge Road where it intersects with Avalon Way. And so we're creating two lots that will allow for the construction of that road, which I'll explain in a minute. But those are two separate lots that are part of the subdivision application. We've assigned tentative lot numbers. I won't bore you with all the details. We understand that the town needs to review and approve any new lot numbers, but we've identified them on the plans and throughout the plans to be consistent for reference purposes. We've also preliminarily identified two names for this master plan road on these figures. Coleman Drive and Doherty Drive. We understand there's some significance to those names in this town, being farmers and being involved in the town for a long time. So if it's possible and the town is amenable, we'd like the names to be considered for naming those roads that... So it will be open to the public. The current thought is it's privately owned, but open to the public. That was through discussions with the town and the staff that we arrived at that conclusion. It may be dedicated for the public in the future. We don't know. We're creating the right-of-way to create it on its own lot so that it can be thought about more in the future. So I, if there's no questions on that, I'll jump into some of the other buildings and graphics. Great. Exhibit A3. So this exhibit is titled Plan Rendering Phase 1, Bridge Point 8 Industrial Park, prepared by Langin. And what it is, is it's a rendered site plan that shows the first phase of the project. It shows the three warehouses, Buildings B1, C1, and E1, that are closest to Clarksville Road. They're not on Clarksville Road, but, I'm sorry, they're not on Quaker Bridge Road, but they're the closest buildings to Quaker Bridge Road. And these three buildings constitute Phase 1. Building B1 is 800,698 square feet. Building C1 is 1,023,309 square feet. And Building E1 is 1,186,092 square feet. Each of these buildings are what are called cross-dock buildings, meaning that they have loading docks on two sides. Each of these buildings are what are called cross-dock buildings, meaning that they have loading docks on two sides, the two longer sides. And the auto parking, which is really employee parking, are on the two ends of the building. The Buildings C1 and E1 are oriented sort of in a north-south direction, parallel to Quaker Bridge Road, whereas Building B1 is more reflective of Amtrak and running east-west. Again, these buildings are spec buildings. We don't know who the tenants will be. So they've been designed with offices in each of the corners. So each building has four offices in the four corners, and there's parking adjacent to those offices. Because these buildings may be single-tenant, they may be two tenants or more than that. We just don't know at this point. So we've tried to build in flexibility in this layout to provide good circulation, access to all ends of the building to provide for the opportunity to get the best possible tenant for these buildings.
But Brian, you won't necessarily build the offices if a tenant does not require a scene, right?
I think you might be a better person to answer that one.
So we would work with the tenant to determine what their office needs are. And then, once the tenant is selected, then we would work with them to the appropriate size, the areas, and that would be done at the tenant-fit-out stage, would be a whole separate set of plans being submitted to the Building Department.
Thank you.
How would that affect the architectural elevations that you're proposing then? You're showing offices in the corners. If a tenant is not desirous of that, what happens to those corners?
We would still leave the features the way that they are. You know, we like the features, not just because of the office here, but just because they flank the ends of the buildings and create a different architectural element. So that would look the same way regardless.
I think that's important. Okay.
Yes. That is correct. Yeah, I think probably Brian will cover that, but you'll see there's a series of berming. There's different shrubs, trees, things of that nature, but it'll vary, you know, up and down Quaker Bridge and Clarksville.
So there's some landscaping that I'll get to in a little bit. There's also detailed sections and graphics in the submitted set of drawings, which is quite voluminous. But there are illustrations from Quaker Bridge Road on that. So again, these three buildings sit on three different lots. Each of the buildings in the layout is compliant with all the bulk regulations for each of those lots, all the setbacks, the building height, the total coverage, the impervious coverage for each of those. No variances are proposed or requested for these buildings. And in addition to, you know, the building, the parking areas, all of the asphalt, the drainage, the landscaping, utilities, everything that's required for each one of these buildings, it's envisioned as part of Phase 1 that the master plan road would be built from Avalon, heading up towards Route 1, as well as all the improvements along Clarksville and Quaker Bridge that are anticipated. So essentially, the infrastructure required for the entire project is being built as part of Phase 1. The only exception to that would be the DOT and the driveway shown to Route 1, because the DOT takes a long time, is a multi-step process. If that process for the permit is not completed by the time Phase 1 is ready to go, then we would envision building the master plan road up until the end of E1, whereas all the service would be provided off of Clarksville Road.
But that begs the question, then, will any tenant be permitted to occupy without that access to Route 1?
We're not sure what you mean by that, Mr. Chair. So we'll get into the traffic counts later, but the access to Route 1 is not needed for the warehouse numbers to work in terms of traffic counts. And we can go through that. We have a whole expert that will go through that. It's anticipating, because this is a planned development over a number of years, it's anticipating the need when we have the commercial and retail development along the site. We want to build that infrastructure upfront to the extent we can, and that's why we're talking about it this evening. But it's not necessary for the warehouse and distribution.
We can revisit that when Mr. Pankey testifies.
Yeah, but just to comment, doesn't your traffic study assumes that connection to Route 1?
We'll go through that in detail, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'd rather have my traffic expert talk about. There's a number of factors that are looked at in traffic study, with it, without it, and he can discuss it in detail. Yep, yep, well, yeah, absolutely. We'll get into that. I don't want to get ahead of myself, and I want to have my expert to talk about that. But for purposes of the plan, I guess we can, you know, unless there's a specific question not related to the traffic that we'll get to later, I'll have the engineer.
I suggest that we defer this discussion until we hear from your traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So if there's no immediate questions on Phase 1, I'm going to show you the entire project and show how this fits into the context of it. So this is going to be Exhibit A4.
Yep.
It's titled Plan Rendering Phase 1 and 2: Bridge Point 8 Industrial Park. And it shows all seven buildings. That will be the full build-out of the warehouse portion of the site. Again, the three buildings, B1, C1, and E1 are part of Phase 1 that we're seeking preliminary and final approval for. And the four buildings that are further away from Clarksville Road, they're called A1, B2-2, B2-1, and D1, which is north of Clarksville. Sorry, they're further away from Quaker Bridge. D1 is on the north side of Clarksville. Those four buildings are Phase 2 that we are seeking preliminary-only approval. So there's a preliminary design, there's preliminary details that we would, that we're asking you to review and consider. And before it can be built, we would have to come back before the board for final approval.
Is there any significance how they are numbered rather than A1 through A7? You've numbered A, B, C. Is there any significance to that?
No, no, we started, we ran through very, quite a few concepts before we landed on this. Somewhere along the way, we got married to the A1, B1, B2 names, and that's what we've kind of stuck with as we've continued down the path.
I just asked a quick question. It's not shown on the map, but in front of E1, C1, and D1 is the retail, right?
That's correct.
And in those kind of brownish spots on Route 1, that's not labeled, that's the other retail.
Correct.
Okay, so the warehouse, once the retail's built, and you said that's being built in Phase 1? Or that's going to be the first things to be built, or no? When will the retail be built? In which order?
Mike, it's not a part of this application. It's considered to be Phase 3.
Okay, Phase 3, got it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's our, it's not our Phase 3. It would be a completely different application that would come in. We're only creating the lots by subdivision.
Okay, got it, thank you.
It is not. There's no part of this application for the commercial. So.
The complete infrastructure of the quote-unquote Phase 3 will be part of Phase 1, no?
So there is a certain amount of infrastructure, such as that, that we anticipate for the traffic, for the water, for the sewer, that's being baked into the warehouse development. And that would be part of the warehouse project. But any physical construction of those buildings or uses would not be. And so all of these buildings, all seven, are compliant with the setbacks, the height, the coverage. I won't bore you running through the details of all of these, but we provided details tables in the application materials and on the plans. That all said, we do have a few design waivers that we are asking for, that we've worked through with the staff to try to mitigate or meet the intent of. And I'll sprinkle those as I go along the project. So moving along, I'm going to introduce another exhibit. And this is going to be helpful to help you understand how we got to this layout.
This would be A5?
This would be A5, shuffling boards. A5 is titled Constraints Exhibit Existing Condition. And this is really where we started our planning of the project. We started to look at all the environmental constraints and conditions and sensitive areas on the site. Because we needed to do that before we looked at where to put any buildings, parking, or improvements. So working my way from the northeast corner, the first thing is there's a green belt that's located. It's aligned with GBLT on your plans, if you can see it. It's really not very far into the property, but it continues from Duck Pond Run, which does run just off the eastern boundary of the site. There's also wetlands, and we know where the wetlands are because a letter of interpretation was issued by the Department of Environmental Protection. Years ago, it's been extended, but it confirms the extent, the location, the value of the wetlands, and the transition areas needed for those wetlands in which any activity would be regulated within them. Those wetlands are shown with this green shading, almost a lot of green triangles shown. There's a lot that overlaps with the green belt in the northeast corner, but there's also some in groves of trees south of Clarksville and down along the railroad track, along Amtrak lines. We also looked at the flood hazard area. Duck Pond Run has a flood, a flood plain associated with it, as does the tributary that runs along Amtrak. That's actually an unnamed tributary to the Ship of Talking Creek. So we looked, and there's FEMA models, there's DEP models, which we used as a baseline to start plotting where those flood hazard elevations were. And then we had a hydraulically model on top of that, the existing flood plain, to show where the extents would be. And that's really what's shown, outlined in the blue dash or the blue FHA line. We also have several buffers along the streams. There's a town buffer that's sorry, 200-foot buffer for the town. There's a riparian buffer for the DEP from the top of bank. And DRCC also, the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission also has a 300-foot buffer associated with these areas. So all of this had to be plotted and identified where it was on the site to kind of see what is out there and what can we do to avoid these areas.
I just had one question about the LOI. Is that still valid?
So we, we've spoken to the DEP. It was expiring in March. We made application for a permit, which they said, as long as you made the application before the permit expired, it would be continued.
It would still be available. Okay.
Thank you.
So if we get to final action, that would be a condition of the application.
Yes, an outside agency approval, yes. And I know there were some questions on, in one of the review letters on threatened endangered species. The DEP has previously applied that there's not threatened endangered species under the current application. They will confirm this, but we do not believe there are any threatened and endangered species on the site. There may be species of concern in the area, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're on the site. That's really under the DEP's purview to review the potential habitat and assign buffers or permit allowances accordingly.
First thing I find very interesting with the geography of what you just described is that it really is central New Jersey, it really is between two waterships. One of the waterships on the south side goes to the Delaware River. And then on the northern side of the property, that's part of the Raritan River watershed going all the way up.
Correct. You stole my thunder for a later slide, but yes, the site has sort of a turtle back in the middle. And a half or two-thirds of it goes up towards the northeast, towards Duck Pond Run and the Delaware Canal.
Which goes to the Mostau River, which goes to the Merrick River and into the some bayway up there.
Yeah, and that played into how we had to manage our stormwater, which, again, I'll get into in a little bit. But we had to look at things separately to keep the watersheds appropriately balanced. So this layout, sorry, this plan and this existing conditions exhibit helped inform us on where to lay out these buildings.
So I'm going to mark this as A6.
Just a question, Mr. Snow, again, was your testimony with respect to the LOI that if, okay, was your testimony with respect to the LOI that if the applicant applied for a permit before it expired, the LOI would automatically be extended?
The DEP indicated it would be incorporated into the permit that we've applied for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is A6. Can you describe it?
So A6 is Constraints Exhibit Proposed Condition. And I apologize, this one's a little fainter as I look at it in person here. But it has all the same environmental constraints, the green belt, the flood hazard area, the wetlands, the buffers. But under, or overlaid on top of that, we actually have all the buildings and the subdivision lines and the setbacks from these items plotted up. And really, where it started is we needed to locate the master plan road that came in from Route 1 and heads all the way down to Avalon Way. And really, the location along Route 1, which our traffic engineer will talk about, and how it lines up with Nassau Park Pavilion's driveway across the road, that really drove where it came in. And then we just needed to organize the site into usable, efficient blocks, carving out across, of course, the commercial lots along Quaker Bridge and Route 1. And so of paramount importance to us was to avoid all the sensitive areas to the maximum extent practical. So we only have minimal crossings where the master plan road runs through the site. We do have minimal floodplain impacts in the sense of only where Clarksville Road has to be widened. And we, and we have some stormwater outfalls, of course, that go into these sensitive areas. But there's what they call general permits under the DEP to impact the wetlands and disturb them and put in these outfalls. So that's all part of the DEP application that's pending, that was put in in March. It will also be reviewed by DRCC as part of their review for the fact that the site's in their watershed.
DRCC, Delaware Canal Commission.
Thank you. And then the other bit of disturbance, which is really at the town's request, and it's very minimal, is there will be a sewer line put in as part of the Duck Pond Run Sewer Interceptor that was planned and partially enacted many years ago. That will provide a possible sewer connection for the athletic club that's further east of our site. And there's also, in the master plan, a walking trail that would connect up to potential future walking trails in the Duck Pond Run watershed area. And so we are proposing minimal disturbance for that as well. In all, on the warehouse portion of the site, again, the dark blue area outlined on this subdivision exhibit, 173 acres out of the 539 acres, which is about a third of it, is being completely untouched. No disturbance. It's being left alone. The development's focused on the other two-thirds, really the farm fields, the former R and D facility.
I have one question for you. In terms of the constraints map. I have one question for you. In terms of the constraints map, there was the, I think a finding of a historical house foundations on the property. Does that factor into the constraints?
So there's an archaeological firm that's studying that. They've done a preliminary investigation and now they're going out to do a, a secondary investigation. But the expectation is because of the prior development of the site, it's not going to be a significant finding.
And could you show us approximately where that is located?
There's actually, there's a
John Corsick for the record.
Yeah, there's the, the home was, there's a small area right here, actually right along Quaker Bridge. And the home itself was demolished back in the 50s. So again, it's a very, very small strip right in this neck of the woods. So it's outside our development.
Okay, so that would really be in the retail section of your development?
That's, that's going to be along with that is correct. Yeah. But I think it's almost close to where the Quaker Bridge right away was. It was all, that all happened. I think there was one time where the DOT expanded part of Quaker Bridge, I think onto that RAM system. And that building already, if you look at the Sanborns, was already demolished at that point.
And, and when do you expect the architectural, the archaeological survey to be completed?
Oh, it's probably another month or so. I mean, they, they did a phase one A, which was submitted and they're working on the phase one B, but I would probably say about another month. But again, to, to Brian's point, that's not going to be anything that's going to impact the development.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I think the sign was on the, on the Clarksville area. I, I recall there was a sign on the, on Quaker Bridge Road. I thought it was. So I'll move on to the next exhibit. I'm going to call this A seven. And this is called Truck Auto Circulation Exhibit. And although our traffic engineer will come up and discuss all the, the traffic counts, I thought this would be a good exhibit to present to just kind of highlight and illustrate the different parking areas, the circulation, kind of how traffic will flow through the site as it relates to the site plan layout. And so starting at Route one, Route one is a right in, right out only, obviously. The, the master plan road is envisioned to be one lane in each direction with a center median or turn lane, depending on if there's a driveway or not. It would also have shoulders on it. And there would also be, I'll get to the bike and pedestrian in a minute. But for now, we'll stick with cars and autos. It'll be one lane in each direction with turn lanes and a median down the center of it. Where it intersects with Clarksville Road, we anticipate a new traffic signal. Along Clarksville Road, it would be built out to the county master mobility plans envisioned cross section, which would be basically two lanes of traffic in each direction plus a center lane slash median plus shoulders on each side. The master plan road would continue again, one lane in each direction with a center lane for turning movements all the way down to Avalon. Quaker Bridge Road would also have improvements. Our traffic engineer will cover that. But then each individual building would have circulation driveways around it. For the most part, they're full circulation around the buildings that could be shared by cars and trucks wherever possible. There are driveways that enter directly into the truck court, which are expected to be for trucks only. It's preferable to keep them separate whenever possible. And so we've tried to make accommodations to do that. Again, not knowing who the tenants will be, or if there'll be one at each end of the building or one in the entire building. We've tried to provide circulation around the entire building. On this plan, you'll see various colors. So to walk you through the colors, the blue boxes are the auto parking areas. And they're really located on the short ends of each of the building that corresponds with where the offices are in those buildings. The pink areas are the trailer, the trailer parking areas. This is where trailers would be left on site as they're waiting to go into a dock or they're being stored, waiting up to get loaded up. The green areas are the loading dock areas. Those are against the building. That's where the trucks would come in and be backed up and either a product would be moved on or off. And then the yellow, which are difficult to see at this scale, but we have identified, and I'll get into this in a minute. We have identified certain parking spaces that we would propose to land bank. Land bank. Which means that we've designed for them. We've designed for the stormwater of them. We've designed for the coverage of them, but we're not going to build them now. We'll just build them as a lawn. And at some point later, should they be determined to be needed, we would come back and ask for permission to build it.
How many are there to propose to be banked?
Alan checked out. There's 200 spaces are proposed to be land banked.
Thank you.
We did include the parking as if it was impervious. It's in, so even though we're leaving it lawn. Correct. The other thing is just mentioning about the trucks and having separate access to the truck courts wherever possible. There are driveways proposed to Clarksville in addition to the master plan road traffic signal intersection. There's two, one located for building D1 on the north side of Clarksville, one located on the south side for building two dash one. Those would not permit left turns out of those driveways onto Clarksville. They would allow left turns in, they would allow right turns in, they'll only allow right turns out. But again, providing the circulation around these buildings will allow the vehicles to get down to a signalized intersection where they can make a legal movement should they need to go in another direction.
Okay, I, I won't say anything, Gene. I'm not the, I seem, seem to have the unworking mic. The roads there are the, those roads, any, both trucks, cars, vans, anything can come out of any of those roads at this point?
Yeah, there's no restriction on cars and trucks entering any specific driveway that's shown on this plan.
So then if I'm looking at the place on the right hand side where we have right in, right out, the trucks coming out of that side would be very close to being able to just want to go out in that spot and they would make a right turn onto Clarksville Road.
Trucks leaving this driveway from B two one would make a right on Clarksville. If they wanted to make a left, they would just continue down to the master plan road and go to the traffic signal and make a left.
And then same thing for C one, they would be likely to want to take the easy right turn out onto Clarksville.
If, if a, if a truck was coming here, but frankly, from my point of view, the C one and the E one driveways, because they align with the auto parking, they're more apt to be used by autos than trucks. I think the trucks will most likely use the traffic signal at the master plan road in Clarksville to access the loading docks because they can do so without going through auto parking areas or around auto parking areas.
Cause we do want to extremely limit any trucks going in, making a right from the, from the right hand side and, and onto Clarksville or in the other direction, making a left onto Clarksville. So that's something I guess.
Isn't this more appropriate, the topic when we get to their traffic consulting?
Yep, I'll bring it up. Thank you.
I know you will.
So the other thing I'll, I'll just point out as a change, and I think a benefit from the existing condition is whereas American Cyanide had their main driveway on Clarksville, there's no driveway proposed on Clarksville anymore. There's really major intersections at Clarksville, the master plan road and Avalon Way that will almost make this more into a regular grid than private driveways trying to get in and out onto.
Brian, excuse me, let me just clarify. The, you said that the American Cyanide primary entrance was off Clarksville? Was it off Quaker Bridge? With the number forty two zero one?
Yes, sir. You are correct. It was off of Quaker Bridge. I'm talking and thinking too fast. Thank you.
Take a deep breath. You're doing fine.
Next exhibit, which we'll call A eight. Is titled pedestrian bicycle circulation exhibit. And this plan provides, this plan illustrates the different pedestrian and bike areas on the site. The green area along Clarksville Road on the north side and the south side is a shared bike pedestrian path. In accordance with the county mobility plan, one is called for, for each side of the road. It's set back from the road. And so we would build that out along the entire frontage of Clarksville Road along the site. We would also propose a similar path and build it along Quaker Bridge Road along the frontage of the property up until about the Route one interchange. And we would continue down on the south side almost until the Amtrak crossing. We would also provide the same bike lane on the master plan road up to Route one. And we would also provide it on the section of the master plan road from Clarksville going all the way down to Avalon. So these are the areas shown in green. These are the shared bike and pedestrian paths modeled after the county's model for these carried throughout our site.
So, so I just have a question about the, about that green pen. As it's approaching the Amtrak right of way, you have an odd shaped parcel, which I believe is an attorney's office. And you actually own land to the right of that attorney's office or to the, to the south of the attorney's office. So why not just continue the green always up to the county? I think the county has a, through the sidewalk going over that bridge. Why not make that connection?
We'd have to look at the right of way with available, along a long stretch of this, we are dedicating right of way to the county for the project, for the location of this. I'm not sure with a, a private entity how that would work, but the other thing I can say is that small sliver, I believe has wetlands, has floodplain and other constraints where it may not be possible to widen it there. So a different kind of solution to link up that bike lane to the sidewalk may be needed.
How wide is the shared bike and pedestrian?
It's ten, ten feet wide.
So you don't have 10 feet coming off of the curve? To,
We'll have to look at, I'll have to look at the right of way to confirm that, but I believe from my recollection, there's not sufficient right of way there as we taper. Because we're also tapering the, the pavement section to, to, to start getting a second or a third lane in there.
I mean, I understand that. So it doesn't have to be a 10 foot. All I'm saying is perhaps you can taper that to fit and make that connection to the sidewalk. I see people walking over that all the time.
That's something we can look at. Sure.
Um, I'd like to add on to Alan's point about, and I know the tracks are not part of this application, of this application, but they're part of the greater scheme of things. The whole idea of, and we'll probably hear from somebody at some point in time, the historical significance of that, that path, it's not developed at this time, but it is part of, you know, the, the whole, the 10 days in Washington. And, and there, I know that, I know as part of the 10 days observance, you know, they have reenactors, you know, do the whole path, which goes right probably along Quaker Bridge Road and on to the area of the battle, the Princeton battlefield. So all I'm asking is if there could be sensitivity to possible development of such a walkway along there for people who want to appreciate the history of this and significance of the area.
Sure, I, I understand and, and, and agree. We'll, we'll take a look at that. Again, the, the vast majority of the frontage along Quaker Bridge will have a path, whether it can be signed, commemorated in some other way. We can certainly look into that, but we will look to see how, and if we can connect it to the existing sidewalk that crosses Amtrak. Okay, sorry. I jumped ahead to the pedestrian a little too quickly. I, I needed to cover one other item for the board's benefit and the public's benefit regarding the parking. I mentioned before the land bank parking. And so as you probably know, the way West Windsor calculates its parking is a little unique in that there's not a minimum. The minimum is the maximum. So you have an exact number to hit. Otherwise you need a variance if you provide too little or a waiver if you provide more than that. And so the requirement for parking in the PCD zone is one parking space for 250 square feet of office plus one parking space for 5,000 square feet of warehouse. And in our, and our client's experience, the market expects more than that for these size warehouses. They expect more around one per 2,500 square feet. And so we proposed and worked through with staff that the overall parking shown in blue and yellow in total would provide about one per 2,500 square feet of parking for all the warehouse space. And that total number would be 2,201 spaces. They're spaced around each individual building to provide proportional parking areas for each end of the building. Of that 200, and knowing that the town is sensitive to being both sustainable and not building more than you need. We work together and are suggesting to land bank 200 out of those 2,201 spaces. We would land bank them. We would design as if they're pervious, impervious. We would design if a tenant needs it, we would not locate trees or lights or hydrants in the way of them. So we would basically design them, but build them as lawn until it's determined if one of the tenants needs those spaces. And if they need those spaces, then we would work with the municipality to enact the ability to build those spaces.
Can you give us an idea of how automated these warehouses are compared to other warehouses that are being built around this time? I'm, I'm just looking at, there seems I'm just looking. There seems to be a lot of parking spaces and a lot of people.
The warehouses are very varied by tenant. There's a wide array of what might be needed. There are certain kinds of operators that require a lot of employees. And there's other ones that require very few. And basically, it's that flexibility is how we landed at. Ideally, we would build one per 2,500, but by land banking this, we're really building around one per 2,800 square feet. So less, less than what the market would ideally like to have to be able to market to the widest array, but within the reasonable range of what the market expects. And another way of putting that is we don't know because we don't know who the tenant is. I'm gonna just, I'll talk about grading and stormwater quickly. And I'll just go back. I'll use the overall site rendering. So I'm referring back to exhibit A4 now. It's the plan rendering phase one and two. And as one of the members of the board astutely pointed out, our site uniquely drains to the northeast to Duck Pond Run as well as to the southwest to the Ship of Talking Creek. And so we needed to manage the the way the stormwater worked on the site to maintain flows going to where they're going, matching or minimizing on how that worked. And so we worked with the staff who forewarned us that we're going to need to come in with a very robust stormwater system. We've got a lot of environmentally sensitive areas here. And I think we have come in with a very robust system. We've got 104 stormwater features on the site. To give you some quick stats, 82 small-scale bioretention basins, 64 recharged directly into the ground, 18 have underdrains. We have three large-scale infiltration surface basins, two constructed wetlands, two large-scale subsurface basins, and 15 different areas of permeable pavement that total about 11 and a half acres of area. That permeable pavement is about 70% of the trailer parking that's on the site. It would be concrete. It would receive the water that runs onto it and falls onto it and discharge either recharge into the ground or recharge by filtering through an underdrain that would take it to another one of the features. And this design in totality significantly exceeds the DEP and the town's recharge quality and quantity requirements. And the way we looked at it is, again, recharge. We looked at it by the divide in the site, what goes where? How much goes into the ground today? And how much can we put back into the ground? And the idea in a perfect world in the DEP regulations is whatever goes in today, you meet. And so we calculated that today about 10 million cubic feet of water falls and goes into the ground. And we're recharging 12,300,000 cubic feet in. So we're about 23% more by capturing the water and putting it in certain areas to be able to percolate into the ground.
Ryan, over what period of time are those numbers you're quoting?
That's the annual recharge.
Thank you.
Sorry? I'm the stormwater expert. Yeah, I had a few more things, but I go ahead. Sure.
Can you go? I know you have three points, P01, 2, 3. Could you maybe go a little bit into how you picked those points?
The three discharge points?
And are and is all of the stormwater amelioration going to be in built in phase one for for the entire project?
Sure, I'll start with the first question first. So the way we determine the three points is we looked at the existing conditions, where the topography falls, how the water moves through the site and off the site. And so to the northeast, everything is is captured through some kind of ditch or tributary to the Duck Pond Run and exits the property at the northeast corner. And so that's one of our points of analysis, our POA. The other two on the southwest corner of the site. And basically, what we looked at in the existing condition is there's a certain amount of the site that flows down to the tributary that runs parallel to Amtrak. And underneath that crossing that we just discussed a few minutes ago. So that was a second point of analysis. And the third point was the other portion of the site, south of Clarksville Road, near Quaker Bridge Road, kind of flows overland towards Quaker Bridge Road and into drainage on Quaker Bridge Road, which ultimately eventually connects down with the Ship of Talking. So basically, those three, the way the stormwater flows today is how we determine what the three analysis points were. And we use that as the baseline to judge how we comply in the proposed condition.
And if I remember, one of those points was like all the way up in the upper left-hand corner.
Correct.
So was that actually in the wetlands as as that point?
Yeah, the the point of analysis, because we have several different tributaries flowing down, we needed to look at where they eventually met up. And even if it's slightly off your property, you want to find where they meet together.
Okay, and.
That doesn't mean we're disturbing all the way to that point, though. That just means the point at which we compare ourselves.
And that's the point at which the water would would be coming out. And I don't have that drawing in front of me now. But there was another drawing where it was a summary drawing and it lists all the points, 1, 2, and 3. And then when you go down the drawing, it seems to say 1, and then it goes down and it lists 1 again. And it goes down. Was that an error or?
I think that table lists the existing flow for 1, the proposed flow for 1.
Right, that's the table.
And then the total quantity.
Right.
Because on most projects, we look at the peak flow rate, how fast the water goes.
That was in the table and you have you have three different points, three tables for three points. And in the left-hand column, you had P1. And you had a and then when you got to the P2 table, it listed P1 in the left-hand column again. So I'm and then when you got to the P3 table, it also listed P1 in the left-hand column. So it was a little confusing to me. It was on your summary table, the the one that's got the variances. I don't have the I think I have the I'd have to go through these.
There are no variances, Andrea.
Yeah, I know. It's the one that lists everything there and what all your setbacks are. There's a summary sheet there and it and it has all of the P1s and P3s.
I'll take a look at that. There may be a if there's a typo in the plan, we'll correct it. But we looked at three separate analysis points and made sure we complied with flows at each one of those.
All right. Yeah, if you could take a look at that table, if it's an error, that's fine. I understand it. But if not, I'd like an explanation. Thanks.
Sure. And so to just round off the discussion, I talked about recharge and how we're exceeding the recharge requirement by about 23 or 23% for quality. So the way quality works is that you have to model a certain amount of rain, an inch and a quarter over two hours. And that's your water quality storm. The idea is that's the majority of rainfalls we have are not these big giant storms. There's these smaller ones and these have the potential, if they're not treated, to bring contaminants downstream. And so the regulation requires us to remove 80% of the total suspended solids in that. The DRCC requires us to move 95% of the TR of the TSS from that. We're actually removing 100% of the TSS removal from what goes to the DRCC. And the way we're able to do that is we basically built these oversized basins that's going to soak up all the water. So we have no discharge to the system from our water quality storm. We're essentially absorbing the water quality storm instead of sending it off-site. We're doing that through bioretention basins. We're doing that through large infiltration basins on the south side of the site. We are meeting the 80% by also doing it through permeable pavement, bioretention, and so forth. Question?
Yeah, the question on how much of are you building absolutely everything right now for that? Or is there some that's going to be built for phase two?
So I'm going to go back to a prior exhibit. This is exhibit A3, which is the plan rendering phase one. So what we're proposing to build is all of the stormwater infrastructure along the Master Plan Road, around each of the buildings, along Clarksville Road. And you can see some of the stormwater facility that's shared with phase two is also shared with phase one. So we would build that. And we did a completely separate analysis to ensure that if phase one is the only thing ever built, that this complies with all the regulations, recharge, quality, and quantity.
And if I remember, the percentage numbers were better for the entire project than they were for just phase one, correct?
Correct. We we get some benefit in phase two with some of the oversized basins that have been included closer to the to the floodplain and the tributaries. And so just the the last item on or the next to last item on stormwater, just to talk about the quantity. Again, as I mentioned, the DRCC requires you to count quantity, not just the flow rate of the stormwater that's discharged. And we are reducing the quantity very significantly. And DRCC will verify this. We've made an application to them. But we in our calculations, we're decreasing the volume of stormwater that goes to the Duck Pond Run from this site by about 80%. They just want you to match and we're reducing it by 80% because we're able to put it into these big basins into the ground. And the other, the the discharge point for the 2, 10, and 100-year storm, they have standard reductions of 50%, 25%, and and 20%. We're also greatly meeting or beating those, I should say, exceeding those. In fact, on the the north side of the site, our 100-year storm, we're only discharging about 12% of what goes there today. They want you to hit 80. We're at 12.
Just the drawing I was talking about before was SWM 106. So up in the right-hand corner, if you want to check that.
I'll check that. Thank you. As as far as our stormwater goes, I do want to just touch on two waivers, design waivers that in working with staff, we've identified we don't meet the strict compliance with, but I think we meet the intent of. And that's really the shape of some of these basins and the location of some of these basins. And really what it is, is the regulation wants the shape to be a natural shape with an irregular edge. And the reality is some of these smaller basins are located right along roads between parking lots and roads. They can't be these really irregular kind of shapes. They are more rectilinear. But I think the rationale and why you don't want them is you don't want these to look like just big depressions in the lawn. So what we've come up with is a planting plan for these basins that's quite robust, that has all kinds of shrubs and trees within the basin itself. The basin still functions, but it's not going to look like a basin in terms of the planting. And so I think, and your professionals can opine, but I I think the modifications that we made meet the intent to not have these basins stick out like, you know, sore rectangular squares or rectilinear features dotted throughout the project. And the other thing is the basins are up to 50% of a basin is allowed to be in a front yard buffer. And we have 75-foot front yard buffers along Clarksville Road. And we have eight water quality basins that fall more than 50% in those buffers. And the reason they're there is because those water quality basins are taking the runoff from Clarksville Road. We're sheet flowing from Clarksville Road right into these water quality basins, treating the stormwater at the source. And therefore, to move them back, we'd have to traipse the stormwater both across the site. And frankly, and I'll get to it in a second, you know, we've incorporated a lot of berm and planting between Clarksville Road and the building. And we can't do that if the stormwater is all the way pulled back. So the fact that the stormwater is for Clarksville Road, that we do have sufficient buffer after those basins, that still serves the purpose of the buffer, I think we meet the spirit and intent of where those basins are located. I'm getting towards the end, I promise. So landscaping, I'll just use the exhibit that I have up A3 right now. This is a rendered plan that shows the landscaping.
Before you go, can I ask you a question on A8? You mentioned the New Jersey Transit bus stop. Have you talked, have you been in conversations with them? Because I know they do come to Quaker Bridge Mall.
Yes, yes, we we had, we've been in contact with New Jersey Transit. We've laid out our plan to them. We've gauged their interest and availability to put bus stops. At this time, they've indicated they're not looking to expand their bus route. But we did talk about in the future, if they were, where would they ideally be? And we've indicated where those are on our plans. So there would be two along Clarksville Road near the Master Plan Clarksville Road intersection. And we've also indicated two on the Master Plan Road, south of Clarksville, because they have two different bus lines that might want to go in different directions. So there's no plan to build them currently. We don't know if and when New Jersey Transit would want to build them, but we've shown where they would be.
If New Jersey Transit actually came up with a plan, would you be willing to work with them to put up, let's say, a bus shelter? Or allow them, allow them to put up a bus shelter?
Yes.
Bus shelter.
Yes, we would work with New Jersey Transit if they wanted to put in shelters to to locate them and get them up on the site.
Thank you.
I don't know if we're getting to that now, too. But do you have some plans for bringing in employees by vans or by some kind of a bus or some sort of a environmentally friendly or easier way to transport people onto the property?
They don't know who they have, who the tenants are, yes, Andrea.
That's very tenant-specific.
So there's no general plan for the property?
It's very much dependent on the tenant that comes in.
Who would who would actually run that? Would that be you or would you expect each tenant to try to do their own thing?
I could have John speak to that, but usually it's encouraged by the landlord and then put into operation through the tenant's own operations.
So it wouldn't be.
John is nodding affirmatively today.
So it wouldn't be like for three different warehouses, each warehouse would kind of be looking to do their own piece.
There could be multiple tenants in warehouses, too.
All right, I'm just saying, there's usually usually the more the more people, the more likely you are to get something like that to work.
Unlike an office building, the operations of these tend to be a little more disparate and all tenants might not line up to use at the same time. Just to speak to the landscaping, our landscape architect worked with your professional to come up with a very robust landscape plan with particular emphasis on shielding the views along the public corridors to the most extent practical and to, of course, make a holistic and creative, attractive facility, regardless of whether you're on a public road or just driving through the Master Plan Road or somewhere else. And so there are a series of landscape plans in the drawing set in in the cross-section. I pulled a few out to show as an exhibit now.
A9, excuse me, A9.
So this this plan is titled Bridge Point 8 Section. So this, uh, this plan is titled Bridge Point Eight Sections. And just to pull a few of these cross sections out of what's already been submitted. Um, what they basically show are two cross sections, one along the master plan road just north of Clarksville. It's labeled Section AA. And the other cross section is across Clarksville Road between buildings D one and B two one, and that's labeled BB. And there's two cross sections shown. Uh, one is at the time of installation. And the second cross section is in the same exact location at the time of maturity. And maturity would probably be on the order of about twenty years. Um, certainly things will grow in between, but, uh, we wanted to show, you know, that it uh, will take time to grow and reach that maturity, but we are designing and planning for the long term here uh, with robust, uh, berms on each side of Clarksville Road. Again, uh, just interspersed with wherever the detention basins are. In some cases, there's a detention basin with a berm then behind it. Yes, sir.
I found the, uh, the presentation lacking that you did not even indicate the height of such berms. Could you talk about that?
Uh, sure, sure. The berms are, uh, they range in height, uh, from about ten feet up to seventeen feet. I'll, I'll bring up the, uh, other exhibit to show you where they are located.
And that's before the additional vegetation, correct?
That's not including the vegetation. That's just the earth on the ground.
Thank you.
So I'm pointing to exhibit A four now, which is the rendered phase one, the plan rendering phase one and phase two. So these berms are along Clarksville Road in front of buildings D one and B two dash one, which these are phase two buildings, not phase one buildings. Uh, but these berms, uh, are located, uh, east and west of the driveway curb cuts um, that are shown on the site plan. Um, they extend down to the stormwater basins or the flood hazard elevations. Um, and the way this plan is rendered is how we envision it, which is that although these landforms will be there, um, there'll be landscaping both in front and on and behind it. So that it'll look more part of the natural environment than just a big mound of dirt to block a view. I'll also point out, uh, in working with, um, the landscape, uh, professional, um, there was also concern with the view shed from Quaker Bridge Road. Although there are lots that could be developed for commercial at some point in the future, we don't know at what point in the future that would be. Um, and so there is both landscaping and a fence proposed uh, between those buildings and Quaker Bridge Road as indicated on the plans that eventually will most likely be obscured by some kind of commercial development. But again, not knowing the timing of that and being that these buildings are phase one, we thought it was prudent to include that now.
Is that landscaping, uh, that you talk about? For D one and so forth, it's part of phase two or is that part of phase one?
The, the landscaping that would be built around D one would be built in phase two when D one is built.
Section BB. Section BB, uh, you have bums on the right and left. Uh, look to me, right side, well, maybe seventeen feet, left maybe ten feet. Is there any, I mean, what's the reason you have two different heights?
Uh, we wanted to both vary the height and as the road changes grade, we also need to maintain room for both the bike paths and stormwater basins. So it's not intentionally lower, but it's going to have a varied height as the topography changes on both sides and the features change on both sides.
On section AA, you have bum on the right side only, not on the left side.
Yes, this is just where these sections were, were taken. It's not going to be the same in every location. If you cut a hundred sections, you'll have a hundred slightly different answers.
But you have mom on the left side also, right?
We do have berms on the left side of Clarksville as well. Yes, just not in this one section we cut.
Thank you.
Did, did I hear you correctly when you, uh, were talking about seventy percent is uh, permeable pavers in the trailer parking areas? Uh, were you having oil, uh, water separation there?
We have seven, seventy percent of the trailer parking stalls will be permeable pavement. So they'll have, um, it'll be a concrete. There's not going to be an oil water separator. This is not where trucks are driving. This is just where the trailer portions are being parked. So not the tractors, not the cab. It's not part of an active roadway. It's just the back of a trailer.
Do you have any oil water separators on the property?
Uh, no, we, we, we do not, uh, have any proposed as part of the site stormwater solution. Uh, again, we are directing our stormwater to these bioretention swales, the infiltration basins and the other features I described. Um, they tend to, they're the current thinking on the green infrastructure and how to manage the stormwater. Um, if there is an oil spill, that's a, a unique experience. That's a little different than your normal everyday run of the mill, uh, stormwater event.
But how will that be handled? Will property management address any oil that is on surfaces and things like that?
Yes, and that, and that's one of the benefits of the developer being the property managers. They have a vested interest. They're not hiring the next guy to just do the job.
I suggest that be a condition if we get to approval, that the property maintenance, uh, folks will take care of any oil spills.
So just to give you some context for this landscaping, and again, I'm going to refer to the overall landscaping plan. And I'm going to speak to the numbers on the overall landscaping plan for a second. This is exhibit A four. Plan rendering. The landscape tables indicate between the, um, the planned landscape areas and the basins, about thirteen thousand trees. In addition, there's also these areas that are not planned landscaping as in a regimented kind of, uh, area. They're reclaiming old agricultural fields. So for example, I'm pointing to the area north and south of Clarksville Road on the east end of the site. And by coincidence, I have exhibit A two up where you can see the existing condition. You can see these brown farm fields. And on the right, on the left hand figure A four, you can see they've now been filled in with trees. We call that reforestation. It would be a combination of trees and shrubs. Um, looking conservatively, that's going to add another seven thousand trees to the planting plan. In total, that's going to be over twenty thousand new trees put on this site for this project. The nurseries in the area are going to be very busy, to say the least. Because in addition, all those trees is also twenty-four thousand shrubs or so, not including the acres and acres of meadow mix. We are proposing very little lawn. The only lawn we have are against a few curbs and near the entrances to buildings. Everything else is going to be, uh, seeded with meadow mix, uh, to look as natural as possible.
A building E one, which is in the lower left of the plan. Um, and it's also at a point where, and you can please show this, where Quaker Bridge Road bends to, uh, go over the bridge over US Route one. Yeah, thank you. So my question is, as you're indicating right now, talk about, please talk about, uh, the buffering uh, and landscaping there as it's really close to US Route one and also to Quaker Bridge Road without the interim uh, properties in between.
So along Quaker Bridge Road, um, there are, uh, I believe there are evergreen trees, uh, between the driveway and and Quaker Bridge Road. I believe there's quite a bit of gray change there, uh, where the property actually dips down because Quaker Bridge Road is rising up to go over Route one. So I'm not sure, uh, if those are, until those trees are more mature, how visible they would be. Um, the building is set back the minimum or a little more than the minimum of three hundred feet from Quaker Bridge. The rest, uh, commercial likely be closer, uh, at some point. But in the interim, there's also, uh, some trees and a fence that's proposed between E one and Quaker Bridge Road on the warehouse property.
So unlike, unlike Clarksville Road, there is no berm, just, uh, the vegetation, correct?
Correct.
A couple of questions. One, I hear you say you were going to put a fence behind the warehouses that are on Quaker Bridge.
Uh, we're putting a fence, uh, behind E one.
And how tall the fence?
I believe it's an eight foot high wood fence.
And it'll be a wood fence and there's not going to necessarily be vegetation in front of it? I'm just thinking that that's what people are going to see from the road will be that fence.
Right. Well, all, all of the existing vegetation that's between the warehouse property line and Quaker Bridge is proposed to remain. So anything that's there in the commercial out parcel is going to remain. It's not going to be taken down.
Unless and until phase three application is filed.
Until the next application is filed and.
You're putting commercial prob, buildings there anyway. I'm, I just wouldn't want, uh, an ugly fence to be what, what people could see from, from Quaker Bridge. I would assume you're saying it's going to be a wooden fence of, uh, like what type of fence?
Uh, like, I think, uh, you know, some, some kind of wooden fence that, um, you know, it's going to, I don't know if it's going to be pickets, but it's likely just a solid wooden fence. The idea is to give it some visual barrier between that and what's a, a road behind it. I mean, we can work with the professionals at the town to come up with.
Right. I, I, yeah, I, I think that would, and, and also, um, I know you do mention in some of your, um, uh, application about using a native and non-invasive plants. And I'm just taking a quick look at some of, some of the shrubs and um, I would like you to make sure that you did work with, um, with the professionals as to which plants we do want to bring in as part of the natural area there.
So let's mark this in as A ten.
I think she's hurrying me along. Yeah, A, A ten is called Plant Palette. And that does have, um, the different names and, and example photographs of the different kinds of deciduous trees, evergreen shrubs and ground cover. I, I think, uh, as a landscape architect, um, pointed out to me today, it's, it's native and adaptive species. They are non-invasive. Um, but the, the mix of them, I think, has been worked through with professionals, but we can certainly double check uh, and make sure that that's.
Right. We want to make sure that not only the, not, non-invasive, but they are supportive of ma- mammals, birds and, and uh, the wildlife in the area.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because a lot of the reforestation and even the landscaping that's going to occur around the building is going to provide more potential habitat and foraging areas compared to the large farm fields, which are very kind of straightforward and it's just one kind of habitat.
Right. I appreciate that. So that's why I wanted to show you. It does.
Correct. And, and at, at your, uh, professional suggestion, we're also going to incorporate, uh, birdhouses throughout the property. Um, trying to provide some habitat, um, possibly some bat houses as well, depending on, uh, if that's appropriate. But we are looking to, uh, provide ways for the wildlife to benefit from the reforestation and landscaping that we're putting in. Um, so there are two waivers, uh, just regarding the, uh, landscaping. Um, one is the, it's actually for the submission. Uh, the checklist requires you to go out and survey and identify every tree over, I believe it's five inches. Which for a six hundred and forty acre property with hundreds of acres of woods that won't be disturbed, seemed a bit like an unnecessary task. So, uh, we worked with your, uh, professional to come up with a way to grid out a certain area or to identify an area that could be gridded to be used to be estimated for, uh, how many trees, uh, are onsite and how many trees would be disturbed by the project. And so that is a waiver from strict compliance of surveying every tree. Um, but I think meets the intent by providing a way to quantify the number of trees that are there. In addition, uh, we did identify certain kinds of trees over a certain size at the request of the professional uh, and plotted those out and did show that on the plans.
I don't, I don't want to steal Dan's thunder, um, but I did, did note that he mentioned that, um, some of the replacement trees were smaller than he, and that that was going to be addressed. So I don't know if that's been addressed.
You stole my thunder for the next exact one, which was the other waiver we're requiring or requesting, uh, is that, um, the ordinance, uh, says we should put trees every forty feet along the perimeter that are four inch caliber uh, along all the perimeters of the building. And for buildings like this, where you've got loading areas and, and parking lots, it's, it's not like a different, like an office building or somewhere where you can plant these trees every so often. And so understanding that certain trees do want to be bigger to buffer the buildings and to provide variety. Um, we have agreed to, I think, a hundred feet away from the buildings. There's about three hundred and sixty trees within a hundred feet of the buildings and those would all be upsized, uh, to meet the intent of providing larger trees around the building.
Just to, just to go the other way a little bit, are any of these trees going to interfere with ability to put solar on, on the roofs?
No.
So we're, we're not going anywhere that high.
They're, 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 we're, uh, I like to think our landscape architects are smart enough not to put them so close that they would affect the benefits of solar on a roof. Um, lighting. Um, to talk about lighting. Did it, eight, mark this one?
Uh, no, I did not. Okay, so, so I'm sorry, I didn't mark the last one. So the palette was A ten and this is the lighting exhibit. This is A eleven.
So this plan is titled lighting exhibit. Um, we've done a, uh, a full analysis of photometrics that's in the entire plan set, but we prepared this graphic uh, to short, to sort of show you where the, the light levels are, uh, on the site based on the site lighting provided. And the site lighting provided are twenty-five foot high, whether they're freestanding pole or on the building. Um, they're LED fixtures. They're four thousand Kelvin, which in the rain, uh, in the, in the LED world, the one thousands are the really orangey yellow ones and ten thousands are really quite bright blue. This is four thousand, so it's kind of right in the middle. It's like a softish white. Um, and, uh, basically what this plan shows is the different, uh, foot candle levels, blue being zero and red being ten. Um, so you can see the intensity of where the lights will shine throughout the site. And phase one is shown, uh, in full color. Phase two is a little bit screened because again, phase two is preliminary. So the final locations of the light still have to be coordinated. But the idea is that these lights are really focused on the roads, on the parking lot areas, on the pedestrian areas. And they're not really spilling. You can see all the blue along Clarksville Road where we've got these berms in this landscaping. They're not really spilling out um, beyond the property except at intersections, which is where you want the light to spill out because you want proper lighting at those intersections. And so, um, we do have a waiver in this regard in that the West Windsor Ordinance requires a design that has an average, an average of a half a foot candle. And our lighting designers follow the illuminated, uh, make sure I get this right, the Illuminating Engineers Society of North America. And they recommend the minimum be a half a foot candle, not the average, but a minimum. And they cite that for safety, uh, consistency, otherwise you can get some really dark spots and light spots if you're constantly going up and down. And so we've designed the parking lot areas to have a minimum of a half a foot candle as well as the truck courts. Um, that's going to result in an average that's higher than a half a foot candle. And so, um, that is a design waiver that we're seeking that's been identified by the professionals.
Brian, could you discuss the hours of operation of the lighting, please?
So without knowing the tenants, again, it's hard to, uh, determine specific hours of operations for the tenants, let alone when they might have shift changes or anything like that. Um, so we did have discussions about whether certain lights could be turned on or off after hours. And the reality is until we know those tenants, we don't know if that's practical or not. And to build that in now, you might not, most likely you won't get it right because you won't know what that's going to be. But I think the thing that struck me when we put together this plan is how really insulated the lighting is to the site itself. You can see how far separated it is certainly from phase one. is how really insulated the lighting is to the site itself. You can see how far separated it is certainly from Phase 1. And again, blue, anything that you see as blue is zero spillage, zero foot candles. And the closest it gets is on the southeast corner, which is building A1 in the back corner. But again, there's zero spill over of the lot line. There's a couple hundred feet of woods to the next property after that. So although we're not gonna propose to limit the hours, we really don't think there's any impacts to any surrounding properties. And lastly, I don't have an exhibit for this, but utilities, as was brought up earlier, utility infrastructure will be built out as part of Phase 1. It will consist of a new water line that will run from Route 1 through the site across Clarksville Road, down the master plan and connect into Quaker Bridge at Avalon. There'll also be a replacement main along Clarksville Road. This is being coordinated with Jersey American Water. We've engaged them to give them the specifics of our project, and they're in the process of going through their design and coordination so that we can build that water main. It will be dedicated as a public water main to them. We've also located the fire hydrants. The fire official has done a preliminary review and given some feedback, which we've incorporated. We certainly understand that any final locations of hydrants would be subject to his review and approval as well. In terms of sewer, again, in the past, this site had its own treatment plant, which had its own outfall permit. In this project, we're looking to construct what the town envisioned as the Duck Pond Run Sewer Interceptor. It runs from just south of Route 1, pointing to an area that's north and east of our site. That sewer's been installed up into that point. And as part of our project, we would continue it across our property up to the adjacent lot as well as extend a stub into our property to service this property. And that was the envisioned goal of that Duck Pond Run Sewer Interceptor when it was put into the ordinance many years ago. So we've designed the sewer pipes to take the flow not only from Phase 1 and Phase 2, but also from the adjacent commercial space, which we know will need somewhere to connect to. So we're building that into our design now. We do have two pump stations proposed because of the grade change and the distance on the site. We need to pump wastewater from the southwest corner up to the location where we can put in a pipe by gravity to connect to the Duck Pond Run Sewer Interceptor. All of the sewer onsite, including the pump stations, will be privately owned and maintained. The Duck Pond Run Sewer Interceptor itself would be built to town standards and dedicated because it will take more than just this project. It will take flow from other sites as well. All other utilities onsite will be underground, new electric, new gas. The only, the only above-ground utilities will be the existing lines along, existing utility lines along Clarksville and Quaker Bridge that will be relocated as part of the off-site packages. Those will remain overhead, but all the new utilities onsite will otherwise be underground.
I think what we'll do is, unless there's some specific questions, we'll go into our sound. Acoustical engineer?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for a thorough presentation, Brian. We're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. And I would ask everybody to be back in your seats promptly. Five minutes. Sam? Sam?
Gentlemen just made a great suggestion. We're not gonna have any public speaking tonight. Maybe we can give that right to the engineer?
What are you doing here? You're right. What word? Are you representing somebody?
And you could actually even just use the last exhibit.
Folks, would you please find your seats?
Testing.
All right, thank you for finding your seats. All right, we're going to zoom the meeting, and the applicant will call their next witness.
Yes, our next witness is our acoustical consultant, Benjamin Mueller from Ostergaard. He's been sworn in, but he does need to be qualified. Benjamin, can you go over your qualifications, please?
Certainly. I have an undergraduate degree in mechanical engineering from Villanova University. My graduate degree is also mechanical engineering, but with a concentration in noise and vibration control from Stevens Institute of Technology. I have, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and Oregon. My license is current as of today. And I've been accepted as a professional expert in many municipalities across New Jersey, not been honored yet to be before West Windsor, but hello, everyone.
So you said you're a P and it's current?
Correct, sir.
Any objections to this witness being expert?
Nope.
So be it.
Thank you very much.
So what we wanted to present is a high-level discussion about noise. We know that it's among the variety of concerns with a development like this. In particular, the testimony that I wish to provide is entirely to address one of the comments from the professional review letters asking for additional detail. So we were retained. Actually, a little bit background quickly about my firm is we're an independent acoustical consultant. That's all we do is noise, and we assist a variety of projects from warehouses to generators to dog kennels, but all we do is focus on noise. So in approaching a project like this, we first take a look, what's our overview of the area? Where are areas of concern? What are our criteria? And then we do an analysis that tries to forecast or estimate what future sound emissions might be. So if I could first bring your attention back to A3, which was a site plan here of our Phase 1, which is preliminary and final. When we're looking at this portion of the development, based on my experience, a noise analysis would never really be called into question here. This is located along well-traveled roads. It's relatively remote from all heavily developed residential areas. But despite that, and especially because as we continue to Phase 2, where we reduce those distances, we did do a noise analysis on this. For criteria, I guess wait before I step into criteria, areas of concern. The nearest residences of concern are, there's a pocket to the north across Route 1, which are relatively remote from the site, but there are residents in that direction. We have residences to the west across Quaker Bridge Road that are behind a kind of already-developed commercial frontage. We have two different pockets of residences to the south. Both are beyond the Amtrak line. And then we have a dense residential development that's to the east.
Benjamin, excuse me, could you borrow Brian's
Laser pointer?
Laser pointer, and that way you would be blocking the view.
As I used to be.
Thank you, folks.
Okay. Yeah, I can. All right, well, now I can, I can go behind you guys if needed, but, okay. So as we were talking about our areas of concern, there's a pocket of residences that are kind of to the northwest of the property. Really, those are the most remote, not of much concern. We have a series of residences that are behind the commercial frontages along Quaker Bridge Road. There are two pockets of residences that are to the south. Both of them are beyond the active Amtrak Railroad. And then we have a pocket of dense residences to the, to the east. So those are the areas of concern. The next thing we talked about in my little outline was what's our criteria? So we have a very robust state noise ordinance found under NJAC 7:29. And then fortunate for all of us, West Windsor's noise code under Chapter 113 basically mimics the whole thing. There are some slight nuances, but they follow the same levels and provide the same language for regulation. So again, a high level, just general discussion, the daytime noise code, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, is 65 dB. Why 65? 65 is set to establish a level to protect speech interference. So 65, coincidentally, well, not coincidentally, but that's the sound level having a normal level, normal raised, normal conversation vocal effort at three feet from another person. So the idea is that during the daytime, if we can make sure we retain that, that everyone isn't forced to then shout over each other and have strained vocal efforts. Now, contrary to that, and the bigger focus for our project here is nighttime code. Nighttime code from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And that restriction then significantly drops for residential receptors from 65 down to 50. Now, why 50? 50 dB, for comparison, since it's difficult to picture it, but it's roughly standing three feet in front of your refrigerator in the middle of the night when you get the munchies. So it's that slow, low level per, a level. So it is a quite a low-level noise. Now, where did 50 come from? Well, 50 is particularly designed to help minimize disturbances during the sleep hours. The 50 dB applies at or within a residential property. Within your dwelling, even with an open window, you're gonna get another 10-plus dB reduction. So the, an outside level of 50 ends up being somewhere right around the high 30s or so within a bedroom. And that's a, an acceptable level to not disrupt any sleep. So that's the purpose behind our criteria. There are also lots of other details that I'll just skim over, but there's also octave bands so that we make sure we don't have a sort of negative or sharp frequencies, and we look at all of that. So getting to our site, there's two things of interest. We have HVAC, which is gonna be the continuous noise that's gonna be 24/7. Admittedly, they could cycle, and they might be specific to a season, but let's pretend like they're on for 24 hours a day. It's the steady presence that's contributed from these sites. When we look at our Phase 1 here, we have our buildings substantially remote from any residential receptor, the closest of which is about 900 feet to the west. We have a distance of about 1,500 feet to the south, and we have over 2,000 feet to the east. So at those distances, HVAC is not a concern, despite, you know, the number of units that are required. Given the distances, and then the adding, adding up all three buildings together, we're gonna have levels below 40 at any receptor of concern. So not an issue and a large margin of compliance. When we look at our truck activity, it's a bit of a different animal. So not only do we have higher levels, which we all acknowledge, but they're also intermittent. They're shortened duration. A lot of the activities that occur within the truck court are gonna be coupling to coupling, which is when the trailers connect and disconnect, air brakes, which is allowed air release. We're gonna have backup alarms, which can be tonal, and we also have truck driving, which is a more broadband frequency. But looking at all of those, and I've been to dozens of sites myself, and our firm has looked at hundreds of these sites over the years, but we've distilled it down to try to categorize it, right? We understand that lots of things happen, lots of makes and models. But what we do is we come up with a conservative level to project offsite. And so we say that truck court noise is roughly 74 to 79 dB at a 50-foot distance. Now, remember, we're talking about distances of 900,000 feet, et cetera, here. So when we look at these maximum levels that will occur within the truck court, and mind you, maximum levels that occur that are shielded by a building receive a substantial amount of additional attenuation. So what drives the analysis, and for comparison to code, for example, would be this building here. This is C1, kind of in the center here. And so, C1 at 900 feet away, slightly shielded by a lot of these commercial buildings, we fully comply with that. There's no issue. We don't require or need any sort of supplemental mitigation. There is a fence that was previously described, which does provide some partial reduction, but distance alone is really what satisfies the requirements.
Is any, what distance is, is the minimum distance that satisfies the requirement?
We try to look at what, what's, what's the shortest distance? So, you know, the, so we would say that the docks are set back probably another 100 feet from the trailers locations. So we're looking at this trailer, what's the closest distance this truck activity might occur, to be as conservative as possible. So moving on then to Phase 2.
Once you build Phase 1, I think this is working now, what kind of testing do you do when the project's ready to go to make sure you're in compliance?
Well, so there are options that can be done. There's, you could do a post-survey, you could do various things like that. Just like the stormwater and a lot of the other, the lighting, there are some other tests that you could do after the fact to prove that. But we're fully confident in our engineering measures and the modeling techniques that we use that we will realize what we're forecasting. So that, that's my goal, is to have a successful project and that we're accurately assessing this with a conservative slant on it. I would hate to come back and be something different than what I've forecasted. But there are a variety of elements in place to check that, but I should also put in parentheses there, or the fact that the way the noise code is structured, both state and local, is it's a complaint-driven ordinance. And so the fact that we're here for you tonight, and as part of my regular activity as an acoustical engineer, I'm constantly looking at these forecasts, and they're not really applicable to the noise limits that were provided. So the way the noise code is written, it's a complaint-driven and So the way the noise code is written, it's a complete driven and it's meant to provide a guideline for enforcement. So while I'm up here trying to do prospective compliance, the, the New Jersey state even identifies, they have a guideline letter that talks about the enforcement action of the code. And they say how it's not designed to be used in this manner that I'm doing it, despite this is all I have to go by. But it, it isn't a bad benchmark. But whether it's, it's 50 or 51 or 48 or however it is, we're going to be in, we're, we're projecting compliance and that the levels are going to be at an appropriate level to not trigger noise complaints, not be abnormal to the area, et cetera. Does it make sense?
So you don't necessarily, when, when everything starts up, do a check you?
Rarely, sometimes there's requirements to do so or something to improve the faith. But you know, when we, when we do our analyses, we buffer in a conservative element. We make sure that we're, you know, looking at it correctly.
Okay. Out of curiosity, since the 900 feet people are in another town, does the complaint go to their health officer or to ours?
Well, we do have an overriding state code, so there is this over element that's there, but it depends. You're right. When we have jurisdiction changes like that, it's generally that goes to county or state. But you know, with municipalities having discussions, there, there might be ways to, you know, bridge that or to, if, if again, if they're complaining to their town official, the health officer or the, the local police, there could be communications between towns, et cetera. So we've seen all kinds of things work out. The ultimate goal is if there are complaints, firms like myself will come in to remedy that. That's the, that's the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So going now to phase two, which is of more importance, because our distances start to get a little bit smaller, especially on the east side here. Um, but with the addition of these three central buildings, virtually nothing changes, right? Again, these buildings are in the middle of the property. They're not any closer to any of our offsite receptors that we've talked about to the southeast, west or, or north. And, and really, I want for an element, just to briefly throw in there is that when we're talking about noise levels, we're working on a logarithmic scale. So when we talk about the HVAC of these buildings coming in at, let's say something like 35. If the new buildings come in and also contribute 35, we're not at 70, we're at 38. So it's a logarithmic scale. So just because everything is doubling, doesn't mean that everything's infinitely spiraling out of control. So when we brought, we're continuing on our exercise to look at phase two, what really stood out as needing additional interest was A1. And what we're looking at with this ancillary trailer court is about 300 feet to the nearest residence to the east and about 800 feet to the nearest residence to the, to the south here across the railroad.
Benjamin, isn't there an exhibit that shows that area more specifically, close up?
Did you guys see our presentation before? Because Brian and everyone?
Right in front of me.
It's right here. Moving it along.
So we're going to mark this as exhibit A12. And it's our sound wall exhibit. Mark it right here.
So indeed, A12, it's a collection here. And so I'm going to kind of work clockwise around it, starting in the bottom corner here. But basically we have several features of our sound wall proposed for A1. So in the bottom left corner, if we can start there is a zoom in of A1 as requested. And it's a little challenging to see from afar, but I assure you it's there. What we're looking at forecasting is an approximate 470 foot long, 20 foot tall wall around the trailer parking area. And then along the south side, about a 530 foot long, 15 foot sound barrier. Now, our distance of 800 feet here is, is just a little bit shy of our 900 feet that we talked about earlier. And what's that resulting in is, is levels of about 53 without the barrier. So this barrier isn't, you know, it's, it's just on the edge of being warranted. But we're, we're putting that in on the, the north here with, or sorry, north, on the east side. We have our short distances here and without the barrier, we would approach levels in the high 50s. But with this, this barrier, any of the activity that's within this offsite trailer area, as well as anything in the dock area is reduced to below 50 at the nearest residential receptors. Circling up to the top part of our.
Benjamin, excuse me, before you go forward.
Yes.
Recognizing that the railroad creates noises for the residents of Windsor Pond Development. But when there are no trains moving, is it your testimony that this application would be within compliance vis a vis the Windsor Pond?
Yes, correct. Yes. Both Oregon state and local are really only regulating our emissions. We're going to talk about ambient a second from a high level, but that will really be a different analysis. That's the impact or the potential impact of the project. So on the north side here or on the top side of our drawing, A12, exhibit A12, we have two sections. AA cuts through our 300 foot spanned distance here. And then BB is, is the 800 foot distance to the south. And what we see is an accurately represented here, not only in the aerial, but in our section is the dense vegetation that's already existing. Aside from the vacant area for the Amtrak. And we show that these sound walls are not even going to be visible at the distances and heights forecast. If they were to be visible in the bottom right hand corner of A12 is some photos of what typical sound walls look like, we're proposing concrete, which is sufficiently dense to block sound from going through it. And we've designed it to be tall enough and look long enough to prevent sound from going over in the flanking paths. We're proposing currently a, a grayish color, which you'll see when the architect talks is the purposes to match the color palette of the building. Speaking of the ambient, just briefly, and maybe let's just jump back to A4 for a moment here. But as far as coastal impact is concerned, we're more than comfortable with the analysis that was conducted here. So not only are we showing that we meet the intent of the codes with the appropriate magnitude of the level, we're also seeing that A1 or any of our, wherever our shortest distances are to, to the west here and to the south, we have intervening noise sources. So we have a, an active Amtrak line, correct? The train is not going to be a 24 hour constant presence. However, when a trains do go through this area, they are exceptionally loud and shorten duration. So from an impact, having a train come through here at various hours, even during the nighttime, it's going to produce levels far in excess of the nighttime code. So having us meet the code limits at our residential receptors is going to have no impact provided, given that we have an existing active trail right away here. And then similarly for our, our folks along Quaker Bridge Road, not only are we behind existing commercial buildings, but you know, when the other developments come in, we're going to provide additional screening. So again, further helping to blend and mask it in. Any of the activity, local traffic on Quaker Bridge Road is already present, is already far in excess of, of those code limits too. So in conclusion, we've shown full compliance. We've shown that for our phase two, we're going to continue to refine our mitigation plan, but we already have a strategy to make sure that we fully comply. And so therefore no negative impacts expected from, from this application.
Question?
Asking questions?
Yes. Yes.
So, so, excuse me, so the, she has a question of what you were saying.
When you look at building A1.
Yes.
And there's trailer parking there. How far is that from those two residential homes on the other side of Clarksville Road?
Oh, substantially further than what we're talking about here. To, then 300 feet. Then we're looking at 300 feet and making sure that that meets code. So beyond 300 feet will continue to be lower in level.
So they're beyond?
Beyond, yes.
They would be protected.
Correct, correct. And if you also see, well, I can't see, but I'm, I'm hoping I don't hit anyone with a laser in the eye back there. But if you see here, there is screening on the northern side of that truck port two, to make sure that sound does not propagate in that direction. Correct, yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the 15 foot high sound barrier that borders the Amtrak line, will that help reduce the sound level for the residents on the other side of the tracks?
It's designed to reduce our site emissions at offsite receptors.
But what about, okay.
You're talking about a train noise?
Yeah, well, it's the wrong side, it's on the other side.
Correct.
But Benjamin has testified that they will be in compliance with the regulations.
Correct.
The mayor and then Alan.
The 15 and 20 foot walls that you showed, that's distance from the, that's height from the ground level, right?
That's height from the paved area, yes.
Yeah. Now, the warehouse is definitely higher than, taller than 20 feet.
Correct.
And the HVAC unit is going to be on top of the roof.
Correct.
So how is that 20 feet wall going to help when the HVAC unit is on top of the?
It does not. Its purpose is entirely for truck operations. We've, we've shown, and maybe I, I skipped over it, but when we look at HVAC for all of phase two as well, we again have all offsite emissions down below 40 dB. So HVAC is just not of the same magnitude as intermittent truck activity. No issues, distance is more than sufficient to meet project goals and to be below, you know, well, quiet, to be quiet.
Thank you. Will the wall along the Amtrak line reflect the sound of the train toward the residence?
Great question. So theoretically, yes, but not in a way that's going to cause a, a, you know, concentration or some sort of a negative effect from it. What you're going to see is that as the train comes down and the trains are fast moving. So again, short currents, but what they're going to do is they're going to come down and what someone who's further south might be aware of the train a little bit sooner, right? And then what happens is as the train's passing the barrier, any sort of reflections are going to be between the train and the barrier. So there's not any sort of an amplification or negative impact from the train. It, it might bounce things around a little bit, but it, it's not going to cause any problems.
So in a sense, the sound might actually bounce from the train to the wall to the train.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Ben, just to understand decibel levels, you talked about the 65 and 50.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like you to define those again. And also could you talk about the decibel levels of the different truck activity as well as passing train?
Okay. So passing train, we've done a variety of train projects. They can be considerably high in level. So if I had to just do some quick math, you know, close in, probably at a 50 or 100 foot distance, they're going to be substantially higher than a truck activity. So I would probably put it more of 90, 95 for that intermittent and for a train pass at, at that shorter distance. And so what we see then is because this is a higher level and closer to the southern residences, that again continues to have a greater impact than anything that's going to occur on site.
There's only like a few trains going in the night, so.
Well, this is the northeast extension here.
Yeah.
Freight is moved at night, Andrea.
Well, even if it is only once per hour, that's still a situation that's driving noise in the area. And so my testimony, aside from compliance with code, would be if a train comes through here once per hour and creates levels in the 60s and doesn't wake the neighborhood up, our trucks, we could have unlimited number of trucks producing 50 at random times. And they will still not have an impact over that, the train in the area.
Yeah, but the trucks are going to be more frequent, right? Almost.
But, but if a train is 60 and the trucks are 50, because they're logarithmic, you have any number of 50s occurrences and they still, if a 60 is not waking up the entire neighborhood, which everyone's become accustomed to, the train railway has been here for a long time, the trucks are even below that. So no, no issue offsite.
I don't know, the garbage truck wakes me up every week. Doesn't matter, doesn't matter how often.
Truck is, is a different situation. It's still a truck, but you're then going to be putting that 50 feet from your house as opposed to 300.
Have you looked at any nighttime mitigation?
That's, so our entire analysis is.
No, no, I'm talking about with the trucks, like not allowing backup alarms on trucks or, or having quieter alarms or, or making sure that trucks turn things off or, you know, various types of mitigation of noise. Not, not blocking noise, but having less noise coming out.
Well, the mitigation, the safest and most uniform mitigation is what we're proposing here is a sound wall. Because even if we might have options to work with backup alarms, there isn't a quiet air release, air brake release. There isn't a quiet decoupling. You can use more care and we certainly urge the users to do so. As far as backup alarms, backup alarms can be the cause of complaints, but we see them come in a variety. So about a third of the trucks I see have no alarm at all. Another third of the trucks have your standard beeper, which we're all accustomed to. And then another third of those trucks have the new age shusher, because it makes more of a broadband noise. It goes as opposed to a beep. And so with that variety, the, the backup alarm beeper is really something that the public, and even in my personal experience, associate more with construction noise. You're passing by the jackhammers, those beepers are all tonal and are all very profound. When we get into a truck facility, it's a little here, a little there. It's not as dominant as.
The, the main issue seems to be building A1, correct?
That's, yes, that's my conclusion.
And that's 334,000 square foot warehouse. I think it's the baby warehouse out of this whole room.
Yes.
Is there any possibility that that particular warehouse could not be operated at night?
There, as far as a mitigation strategy, that is something that could be entertained. But again, tenant specific, something that would need to be worked out and made sure that that's appropriate. However, we've shown that we're looking at a 24/7 operation. That's what my analysis is based on and we're showing no issue, full compliance.
Would that, would that be a big hardship in getting a tenant?
It depends on the tenant. Certainly something that, you know, discussions might be had on, but, but it depends. I will say from personal experience as well as supporting data, we'll hear from traffic. But the, the traffic handbooks that are provided show typical breakdown of truck activities at a warehouse. And so that's what they're using. I use that also for acoustics. And it shows that warehouses are busy from nine to five. That's when things are going out and coming in. And then at nighttime, the night shift comes in and gets things ready for the next day. So you don't have this, despite us requesting 24 hour access and the buildings being occupied for 24 hours, the truck activity is concentrated during the day and there's dribs and drabs at the night.
Can I ask the applicant if that would be something you'd entertain?
Sure.
Yeah. So trying to mitigate timing, there is problematic for just operations and just, you know, tenants, because Tennessee, the ability to have their operations continue based on seasons, based on overtime, based on product demand. So trying to limit operations at nighttime is problematic to, to get good tenants and to keep the facility operating properly. That's why we're going with this approach and putting, you know, obviously we engage Benjamin to look at it so that we could have a fail safe scenario of how to take care of the noise. And this is a solution that handles it.
Okay. I mean, obviously if it turns out that this is an issue and there are reports and they're not, for, for whatever reason, you're not able to do it, then I would assume we would have, we would have to shut down at night. We would have to do that for the Department of Health. I assume we have that obligation, not even right, but obligation.
I could say that, I don't know if this is on, that there's no variances from the requirements. So we would have to meet them. And if we don't meet them, something would have to be happened, either further mitigation or different designs, something would happen. Also like to remind the board that we're also anticipating this as in phase two. There's only one building in phase two, so we'll be back here before the board to discuss this at the next.
So, so the planning board will get to see phase two, and at that point we'll have had experience with phase one and.
Absolutely. Well, I don't know if it'll be built by then, but I, I'm, all I'm saying is that the phase one does not have any sound walls proposed. And we're anticipating them in phase two on this particular place to be extra protective and to be certain we are going to comply with all of the applicable codes. We're not going to actually construct that until we're back before this board and get final approval for that building. And we could have a further discussion if you have any other questions regarding the wall and some of the details of it at that time.
But if I just make it simple, we have to comply with the ordinance, right? So if the ordinance is going to be your 65 during the day, 50 at night, we have to comply with. So by way of your example, if there's an issue and it's not complying, we need to make it comply. That's what we're going to be required to do.
Thank you, John.
Ben, I live in Penneck and not too far from the Princeton Junction train station. In the summertime, the train sounds are louder and clear than.
In the summertime, the train sounds are louder and clear than in the winter. I'm wondering if you could touch on that concept for this application in terms of loudness of sound seasonally in, in terms of summer and winter and stuff like that?
Sure. And just in general, the phenomenas that you experience are when it's propagating over very large distances. So when we start to hone in on where we're most interested, 800 feet, 300 feet, those are short distances. So those are not going to be ones that are going to vary much over season or temperature, humidity, all of those concepts. What you, you can, you know, what we help use to help balance that is we do use air absorption, which is going to be steady throughout. But we also don't take credit for other things. So we're not taking any credit for the dense vegetation. We're just using distance propagation and ground absorption. That's obviously to be conservative, because when the trees lose their leaves, they're going to provide less attenuation than when in the summer. So while there are some modulations in that, they're not going to drive any sort of wild change at the short distance we're talking about. And it's primarily what you're hearing is just because that sound is traveling much further, so it's, it's just reaching you. The effects of, of the atmospheric conditions only help to, they won't amplify it. It'll only reduce it. So when you're hearing it louder, you're just hearing it less adjusted. You're hearing a cleaner result of that sound.
Did you do any vibration studies?
Vibration? No, we don't typically do that. So the vibration work in the, in the practical world is if, if it's shaking, then we come in and do something about it. But even though we have heavy equipment, it, in close, there can be some vibration. The fact that we have no continuous pavement with any offsite means that this is going to hit dirt and then just completely dissipate. The same can be said about the active railway. That's going to generate a substantial amount of vibration, but pictures aren't falling off of nearby houses.
I have a quick question. The 300 feet and the 800 feet is?
Mike, a little closer to the mic.
Sorry, the 800 feet and 300 feet, is that to the trailer parking?
It's, it's to a location that we've deemed the closest position a truck of high activity would be to it, yes.
Okay, well, that's the trailer parking, an area of the trailer parking. Okay, thank you.
Anything else for this witness? Does that conclude your testimony, Benjamin?
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I just had a quick question. What are the hours for the nighttime regulation?
So it's 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Thank you.
All right. As I announced at the beginning of the meeting, we are targeting adjournment by 10 o'clock. I don't think there's time for another witness, Chris, right?
I, I certainly wouldn't put us into traffic, but if the board wants to see some of the architectural drawings for five minutes?
I think we'll, we'll drop it here.
Okay.
For everybody's information, the next three Wednesdays have been set aside for continuation of this application. We would hope that we would be able to conclude the first Wednesday in June. Sam, are there any announcements or anything for the board that you need to make?
Yes.
And, and Chris, I have one question for you.
Yes.
For, for the benefit of the planning board, could you please prepare a document that has all of the waivers, like on one page?
Sure.
Thank you. All the waiver requests, that is. Thank you.
Actually, we do have that prepared already. I believe it's the notice. It lists it all out in the notice, even though it's not entitled. I mean, it's not required under the municipal land use law, the listum. I did provide it in the notice just to be extra clear. But we'll go through and make sure, and I'll get you a separate document anyway. Yeah, sure. The, the other thing, Mr. Chair, is could we carry this to date certain? And, you know, the time, I know you said next Wednesday, just announce it that this is going to be carried to that particular day. I don't know what the day is actually. 18th, okay. Without further notice.
Correct. And we will make every attempt not to put anything else in the way, like review of minutes and stuff like that. I want to thank the members of the public who are still here for your very gracious compliance with our request for no outbursts and things like that. And unless there are any objections from my colleagues, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:55 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board.